I'd like to call the Tuesday, August 28, 2018, City of Gardner Planning Commission Meeting to order. You will all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under heaven indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We will start with roll call on my right.
Steve Baudin here.
Scott Bowden here.
Robert's here.
Austin here.
Brady here.
Quorum is present. All matters listed on the consent agenda have been distributed to each member of the Planning Commission for study. These items are considered to be routine and will be enacted upon by one motion with no separate discussion. If separate discussion is desired on an item from either the Planning Commission or from the floor, that item may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda. Are there any items that anyone from the commission wishes to remove from the consent agenda? Are there any items anyone from the public wishes to remove from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
So move.
Have a motion by Bowden with a second by McNear to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion carries five to nothing. Regular Agenda. Item number one, Olathe Ford RV Expansion. Z-18-05, hold a public hearing and consider rezoning for 23.4 acres from A agricultural to C3 heavy commercial districts, oh, and C3 heavy commercial districts to M1 restricted industrial district located south and west of 19310 South Gardner Road. The staff presentation, please.
Good evening Commissioners, Michelle Linegar, Principal Planner. The subject item before you tonight is a rezoning of property south and east of the main part of Gardner. This property is owned by the entity that owns Olathe Ford RV, which is just north of there. If you look at the map in front of you, the blue outline are the two properties that are under consideration for tonight. The main part of the RV center is not included in this. They've site planned that property, it's all moving forward. The rest of it, they're looking at doing some expansion in the future, so they're looking to set the properties up for that expansion. To the northwest of the property is I-35, and then north is the interchange for South Gardner Road and I-35. Crossed Gardner Road to the east is county property, rural zoning district. It's, you can see it's row crops type of farming. To the south, there's school district facilities, both Service Center and NIKE Elementary School. Those are both zoned for agriculture. And then directly south of the property, you'll see some slivers of property. This is zoned for residential and hasn't moved forward quite yet, but we're looking for that to happen soon. Staff findings, the project is consistent with the I-35 and Gardner Road interchange sub-area plan, which is, was incorporated in the comprehensive plan, identifies the properties as regional commercial land use. Excuse me. Which if you look in the zoning ordinance, that includes the M1, C3 and prop, zoning districts. The proposal is consistent with the city goals and policies to grow and develop on the east side of the interstate. As you know, the Gardner Road interchange plan, that was, that and the other interchange plan were asked for by City Council to direct future development, and the council has shown support for future growth across the interstate, so this would help support that. Additionally, there is the existing business there that would like to expand. Removal restrictions will not detrimentally affect the nearby properties as the Land Development Code provides for buffers between zoning districts to help mitigate any potential negative impacts. Really, the uses that they're looking at putting there is more RV storage as far as for the business, but also an actual like self-storage of RVs in both facilities. We're lacking that in town, some larger space for that. The code sets out some great standards for that as far as fencing and buffering, substantial setbacks from those residential areas, and typically that kind of use is relatively quiet. People are most likely going to be using those types of facilities during the day, although people will be, you know, bringing their boats in, but typically a low, low traffic, low impactful type of use. The rezoning will be a gain to the economic development of the community by allowing the development and expansion of existing building, or existing business, sorry. Missing my map, or my pictures in here. I'll go back to my map. As you can see, the northern property that I refer to in the, in the staff report, it does have some existing RV storage on it. This business was originally started under county jurisdiction. That piece of property has not changed much since it was in the city. The other, the main portion of the property that is not included in the rezoning has been plotted, has gone through site planning process for various expansions and such. So the existing storage on that site is a non-conforming, legal non-conforming use. So you can see the property to the south is just vacant property. Also, I'd like you to note that the southern property is landlocked, there's no access to public roads from that property, so in the future that would all be combined. Staff does recommend approval of the rezoning of 23.4 acres from A and C3 districts to the M1 district and recommends forwarding the application to the governing body for approval. And here's a recommended motion.
Thank you. This is a public hearing item, so we now have a public hearing. If anyone would like to comment on this item, please come forward and state your name and address for the public record. Individuals are allotted three minutes, or an individual representing a group is allotted seven minutes. And is the applicant here this evening? Do you have, if you have a presentation or anything to say, please come forward.
I think she did a great job. So, I just wanted to be here in case you did have any questions. I'm Mark McCover, 15617, Shannon Lane, Olathe, Kansas, but I count, I don't think I can say any better than Michelle did, so if you have a question, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other members in the public wishing to speak on this item? If not, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Got a motion by Bowden with a second by Brady to close the public hearing. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five to zero. This is Planning Commission discussion time, so we'll start on my right with questions, comments, concerns.
Okay.
I don't have any concerns.
I don't either.
Just a question about coming in and out, it sounds like there's just that one entrance still, but you made reference, Michelle, to something for down the road. What's the long-range plan for entering the exit?
We have talked, the applicant and city staff, about this project. There's been some discussion of whether the existing access would stay, or if it would move further south onto that newer connection to get it further away from 191st Street in that future connection. There was the discussion of maintaining the two, so I don't know that that has completely worked out.
So you're talking about an access road between the service center, yeah, right there?
They would, you know, potentially relocate it to being here. There was discussion about maintaining this one and keep putting a second one down here to allow for gated access for the storage area.
And would the landlord be responsible for that road and the access, or is...
Yeah, it would be a private driveway.
One other question I had, did I hear in the presentation that the southernmost piece of this land section would be combined with the others so that it would not be landlocked? Is that correct?
Yeah, they would, they would combine the two properties, or potentially the three properties to make them into one lot.
So it'd be one, they would combine it to one legal? Is that correct?
Yeah. They're, currently they're unplatted.
Okay. Hearing no further questions, and if there's no further information from staff, I would entertain a motion on this item.
A motion after review of application Z-18-05, a rezoning for CF221502-3014 and CF221502-3015. In staff report dated August 28, 2018, the Planning Commission recommends approval of the application, recommends the governing body approve the application.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Bowden with a second by Commissioner McNear that after review of application Z-18-05, a rezoning for CF221502-3014 and CF221502-3015. In staff report dated August 28, 2018, the Planning Commission recommends approval of the application and recommends the governing body approve the application. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Regular Agenda item number two, Conestoga Estates Recreation Sales Office, FDP-18-06. Consider revised final development plan for Conestoga Estates for the development of a sales center and recreational area at 1199 East Santa Fe Street. Have a staff presentation, please.
Michelle Linegar, Principal Planner. This item is for a well-known manufactured home park in the city of Gardner. This is very large park. It touches East Santa Fe Street, it touches I-35, it touches Moonlight Road, it's directly to the west of Walmart. Specifically, the property area that we're looking at for this final development plan is the area outlined in red. This is kind of a, it's an existing amenity area. It's got an existing clubhouse and pool, and there's a maintenance facility towards the southern area, and there used to be an old house on the property, and that was taken down this summer. This property has been around a long time. The original part of the facility, which is the area pretty much around the amenity area, was developed in the seventies when it was under the jurisdiction of a county. This was actually two different parks at one point. The eastern portion was one park, the western portion was another park. The western portion actually came into the city prior to the eastern portion, so that developed a little bit separately. And then the connection and expansion of the eastern property once that was annexed. And as you can see, there's still some empty area to the south. They also have some exterior storage area to the south. This property was recently changed hands this summer. The new owners are really looking at making some upgrades to the property. They've been working on taking a lot of the extremely dilapidated units out, replacing them, and being a little more stringent on their rules and upkeep of the property. So we're really looking forward to seeing this, this property increase in value and be quite the amenity to the community. So what they're doing now is proposing to upgrade this area. This is looking from Santa Fe, looking southwest. The building you can see on the left-hand side is the clubhouse, and then the pool is right there. They have a large amount of open space in this area, some grant mature trees, not a lot of active recreational type of things, playgrounds, stuff like that, just some great open space. Here's looking southeast from East Santa Fe. Again, this is all a lot of green space. And I, this is a very busy plan, so I didn't pull things out of it, but you have a copy of this. Some of the new amenities that they're going to include, walking trail, dog park for both little and big dogs, with a fountain in it, and a shade area, an open play area in the middle, some fitness stations, a hammock garden, a tot lot, a barbecue pavilion, basketball and pickleball court, shade structure and pergola at the pool, and a sales office, which will look like one of the units, but it will be a space for the leasing and sales of the units instead of taking space out of the clubhouse. They're also proposing significant amount of screening around the maintenance yard and around some of the pool area, and the walking trail will have some bollard type lights through it. I think this will be a great amenity to the park. There's a lot of people that live in that park, and they're, the nearest park facility is further south on Moonlight Road, so this is excellent to have for this large amount of people in one space. Staff findings, this use is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the Gardner Main Street Quarter Plan, which is part of the comprehensive plan, which calls for medium to high-density residential land use. The site is capable of supporting the changes. As you could see, there was little development in that area. Green open space, which is great, but an area for more people to become active. So the design and layout is consistent with good planning principles and practice. The project is generally consistent with the approved preliminary plan. Being that this property is a culmination of multiple pieces and such, there was a preliminary plan approved for the entire development back in the early 2000s, and that was considered the approved preliminary plan, so while that did not show a lot of these details in the amenity area, it does not, it's not a great enough change that would trigger the revision of the preliminary development plan. No new public infrastructures required with the project. There'll be private utilities to the sales center, water to the fountain area, and some private electric for the lighting along the path. Staff recommends approval of the final development plan, FDP 1806, for Conestoga, having found that all requirements are met.
Do we have the applicant here this evening? If you'd like to come forward, state your name and address for the record and...
My name is Charles Crook. I'm the COO of the company that purchased Conestoga, island at 14710 Canopy Drive in Tampa, Florida. I think Michelle did a great job, so if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer it, but we bought this property with the intent to upgrade it, and that's what, this is part of that plan, so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Planning Commission discussion. Start on my right. Questions?
The questions aside.
I was very happy with the amount of amenities that are going to this. I think it's going to be a great asset for that community, and very happy to see it.
I have no questions.
Just extremely excited. I was a homeowner at Roland Homes 37 years ago. That was the very first place I lived at, in Gardner, and now it's Conestoga, obviously, but I wish these amenities would have been there when I was living there, so I fully support this, and it's, I think it's a great move for the city.
I don't have any questions either, so with no further questions and further information, I'd entertain a motion on this item.
After review of application, FDP 1806, a final development plan for 1199 East Santa Fe Street, and a final development plan dated August 15, 2018, and staff report dated August 28, 2018, the Planning Commission approves the application after finding all applicable requirements have been met.
Second. I have a motion by Brady and a second by Bowden that after review of application, FDP-18-06, final development plan for 1199 East Santa Fe Street, and a final development plan dated August 15, 2018, and staff report dated August 28, 2018, the Planning Commission approves the application after finding all applicable requirements have been met. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Regular Agenda item number three, text amendment, TA-18-09, reconsideration of a text amendment pertaining to residential fences to include original standards entered inadvertently removed. Staff presentation, please.
Good evening Commissioners, Kelly Drake-Widward, Chief Planner. Sorry you're looking at this again, but it was probably just an accident, got a little in a hurry, putting together the, you know, pace and move things around for the fence standards. At the June meeting, you did hold a public hearing on the new portions, and, well, all of it, and recommended a text amendment pertaining to fences, and then we discovered we had left out some of the language that had already been adopted in the code, and so this has not yet been presented to the governing body, so they'll, it'll just be presented to them with whatever you decide tonight. This is the portion, part of it, that you approved last time. You might remember that. We tried to make it a little more clear what was happening if you had fences in the front yard, if you had fences in a different street side, and if you had interior fencing. Just pretty simple changes there. This is the, these are the provisions that were left out. Things like keeping them out of side triangles, things like making sure if you either have the fence on the property line or at least three foot in from the property line so that it can be maintained. And then, the most important one there is making sure that fences are constructed with the finished side facing the adjacent property, and that's pretty much standard, you know, in all fence ordinances. So pretty side out. And then, there's just a few things here that were originally omitted, which is, we added back the following materials, vinyl simulating wood, concrete with stone or brick veneer, precast concrete, and simulated stone or brick. And then adding the material statement for the M1 and M2 districts where it says, "Non-decorative fences are permitted in the rear and side yard only, but no closer than 30 feet from any public street." And then adding back the provisions on the electrified fencing in the RE and A districts. So, staff recommends that you approve the revisions to the recommended text to retain the current standards that were inadvertently omitted, and based on the findings in those three staff reports where we've talked about it. And then recommend approval to the governing body. And I put together a recommended motion, which allows you to not have to read the whole thing. I think this works. Ryan says it works, so.
Thank you.
That's all I have on, on that item.
Okay. This is not a public hearing item, but if anyone from the public has anything they would like to say, I would entertain that. Seeing none, I'll move to Planning Commission discussion. Any questions, comments, concerns, starting on my right?
I don't have any.
No.
You need to...
Stupid question, at very bottom, page three, electrified fencing in RE or A districts, what does that stand for?
Oh, sorry. RE is residential estate, so it's like the one acre minimum lots, and then A is agriculture.
Okay. That's not on my cheat sheet that you guys made for. And then on 4D1ABC, is that industry standard, what you have there, and is that the norm for most cities in terms of the type of material the fences are?
Um...
So you've added the concrete...
I don't know. Usually they're pretty simple, and they just say, you know, we allow these materials, and they don't always get into detail on what is more ornamental or what is not. But the changes from last time to this time are, are no, no big change from what we approved last time.
Okay. That's all I got.
I think the only question that I have at the moment, it has to do with 4, I'm not sure where to go, 4B, 4B. So all fencing located along adjacent lot lines should be constructed so that either the face of the fence is on the property line, or the face of the fence is at least three feet from the property line. What's the driver for that?
I was just kind of looking to see if it was in the farmer code before I answered. I'm going to jump in here. The idea is that it's either on your property line or three feet back so that you can or maintain it, so that you're not, you know, a foot from your neighbor's fence, and then nobody can squeeze in there, and you get weeds growing in between them, and so it's either three feet seems acceptable to be able to get you in there with a trimmer...
Right.
Or to just have it right on the property line.
Okay. Any additional questions or discussion from the commission? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion on this item. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion on this item.
The planning commission, after review of findings and staff reports dated April 24, 2018, June 26, 2018, and August 28, 2018, recommends the governing body adopt TA 1809 and main section 1708040B fencing as listed, printed on page three of the staff report.
I have a motion by Brady with a second by Roberts, that the planning commission, after review of findings and staff reports dated April 24, 2018, June 26, 2018, August 28, 2018, recommends that the governing body adopt TA-18-09, amending section 17.08.040B fencing as written in the recommended motion of the August 28, 2018, staff report, or page three of the staff report. Any additional discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Regular agenda item number four, Main Street Marketplace has been deferred. Regular agenda item number five, comprehensive plan amendment has been deferred to September 25, 2018. Discussion items number one, text amendments, TA-18-10 and Z-18-06, discuss proposed text amendment and zoning map amendment to create a Gardner Lake overlay district. Do you want to do them separately?
Yes, I think that would be a good idea, take them one at a time and discuss them.
All right.
So that's basically, basically what we'll be doing is discussing the specific approach that's presented, and see if you want to provide some other direction in preparation for a potential public hearing on these two items. Okay, the first one, it has to do with the properties along Gardner Lake, which was a topic that was initiated by the planning commission at the July meeting. And so the situation is that the city of Gardner has allowed adjacent property owners to purchase the lots that are between their lot and Gardner Lake. And some of these property owners now want to combine the lots so they can do some improvements. And there is no, we found there's no building type that's allowed in that district to accommodate those lesser lot widths. And even if they were combined, these two lots, they would not be non, they wouldn't be compliant to our current lot standards. And the code will not allow new non-conforming lots or non-compliant lots to be created at the current time. So in an effort to make the existing context compliant, at the last meeting, we asked the planning commission to consider initiating a potential amendment for creating a special overlay district. And that would address several different development issues. Besides the lot standards, other issues are mostly related to the orientation of the homes on the lots, whether you consider the front to be the lake or the access side. And that's, orientation is related to several things, like frontage standards, accessory structures, animal enclosures, fences, outdoor vehicle storage, and yard encroachments. And I think what I heard from you all from that meeting was that you would like to accommodate as much of the existing context as possible in potential regulations, and that you wanted to help homeowners to accomplish their goals. So that's where we were. We are asking you to discuss a new approach, or a different approach, in the interim, at a change of strategy after we talked with the city attorney and with our consultant for the land development code. They said, "Well, here's some, here's some options." And so in order to kind of address the near-term issue in a more rapid way, I guess, shorter process, and because this issue currently impacts only a few lots, four or five lots that are in the city, we're recommending this new approach. So if you, later, if we want to fully address these issues at Gardner Lake, including lots that may or may not be annexed in the future, because that requires a lot of time and public input and such, we could look at that with the next comprehensive plan amendment cycle that we would look at. We'd do some planning for that area, look a little bit more at the context, and then follow that up with some zoning regulations. There's also another issue in that, as far as the definition of front lot line, we may have some leeway in the, you know, currently in our code to determine which part of the lot is front for purposes of applying these regulations. It does say, "In cases of further uncertainty, the director shall determine the front lot line." So if the regulations were totally not making sense, the way they were applied in a certain situation, we could determine possibly that the lakeside for all those lots is the front. So that's just a thought. There are other ways we can deal with that in the future, but right now, we're just suggesting that we take care of this issue, that the land development code does not support the creation of new lots or combined lots that don't meet the minimum requirements of the development standards for the enabled building types. Similar situations in the past have caused some people to de-annex their properties, so we're trying to make it so that doesn't have to happen for typical improvements. So this is kind of a summary of just the intent of the land development code regarding non-conforming lots. The intent is let those non-conforming lots continue, but bring them into conformance with current regulations as is reasonably practical. So, you know, if you had a property owner that owned contiguous parcels, and having them, you know, combined would make it into a conforming lot, then that's what that means. You're going to want to try to do that. But the intent is to balance the interests of the property owners in their past investments, discourage anything that expands or reinforces a non-conforming situation. We don't want that to happen, but still promote investment that's consistent with our comprehensive So what we want to do, the comprehensive plan designates this area for low-density residential use. So we think this amendment would further the intent of land development code for non-conforming lots and enable property owners to initiate typical residential improvement. So the goal here is to enable the combination of existing non-conforming lots, which, while not meeting current standards, does not increase any existing non-conformity, and then maintain the legal non-conforming status to enable future improvements. So this is what the language looks like. The red text is the new text that we're proposing, that you consider. So it basically says, "You can't do anything with a non-conforming lot, except for government purpose, that would compound or increase that non-conformity. But you can combine non-conforming lots per the applicable procedure in our code, provided the merger does not increase the degree of any non-conformity." And then it also provides that that newly combined lot will continue to be a legal non-conforming lot, and then you can do the things with it that you can do with a legal non-conforming lot. So the other things you might want to know is that if anyone wanted to build a new structure on a non-conforming lot, currently, the standards allow that they could do so, as long as the structure is compliant to current standards in the code, like things like setbacks. And also, if you are able to rehabilitate or expand a non-conforming structure, as long as it doesn't increase that non-conformity and complies with all other requirements. So that's kind of how the non-conforming thing works. So at this time, I just would accept comments on this approach and go from there.
Thank you. Comments from the commission? Or, I guess, before we do the commission, it's not a public hearing item, but it's...
No.
Okay. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this?
Nope.
Okay. Anyone from the commission have comments, questions, concerns? Start on my right.
Not at this time, we may come back, though.
Okay.
I think it's a good short term. I like what you did here. I still think, in the long term, we need to have more of a plan for around the lake. But I think that this deals with the issue for right now. How far out would the overlay district go? Is it just to the first lake road, or is it...
I think that it would probably try to encompass all the lots that are smaller and closer together, everything that's in that same context.
So they'd fall underneath it as soon as they wanted to be annexed, right?
They, yes.
And we decide whether it's an overlay district or not, based upon whether it's a conforming lot or not?
We can just create a brand-new district for there. It doesn't have to be an overlay, so.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
No, I don't have any questions. I think this is a good compromise, especially since most of the lots aren't in the city of Gardner. So I know we have to plan, but it's hard to plan when it's not in our, you know, in our jurisdiction, so I think this is a good start, or work around.
Assuming we have a public hearing next month, will the owners of those four to five lots be invited to the public hearing?
Yes, we provide notice to, well, let's see. How's that work, Ryan's? It's not really pertaining to specific properties.
Well, it's, this is, we're just talking about a tax amendment, so you don't publish, you just give the regular notification, and you're not going to find 200 feet, because it's applicable anywhere.
Yeah. I mean, we can, I mean, the one applicant is interested in this, obviously, that, where this issue kind of made us wear.
There would be some value in a public hearing if that one applicant would attend and address this group.
Uh huh.
Of their, of their, what they have to say, and have them weigh in. I do understand why you don't send out a global invitation, that makes sense. But if you do have communication with that applicant, it'd be great if they could be at our September meeting.
Okay.
I think Commissioner Brady brings up a good point, but this just directly affects people that have made an application, and it really kind of drives this amendment. I think we should have, they should have the right to be heard and have input to the commission so that we have a full context of what we're dealing with.
And I apologize if I just missed this somewhere, but I've gathered everything we've talked about in the text amendments, but did we talk about the overlay district or zoning map amendment, and how that plays into all this? Maybe I'm just unclear on what that does for us.
I don't, were you here last?
I was not.
Okay.
So if I need to be caught up later, I can be.
We looked at the aerial image, we talked about, you know, what would, you know, that this would help if people in the future did want to be annexed into the city, then it would apply to more lots, and that's why, you know, we originally looked at this broader scope of a fix.
Right. The, so the text amendment proposed, that would apply anywhere within the city?
Yes, because this, that just affects the non-conforming lot section of our code, which is like a procedural thing.
Yeah. So are we doing this, this talks about a zoning map amendment to create a Gardner Lake overlay district, but I don't see any notes related to that in here.
Yeah, no, the zoning map amendment would not need to occur with this interim fix.
Okay.
Sorry, I misunderstood your question.
That's all right. That was our discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Discussion item 1B. TA-18-05, discuss proposed text amendment pertaining to a planned district near the I-35 interchange.
Okay, this topic was initially, actually initiated by the city council on February 5th, 2018, first discussed by the planning commission in April. The understanding that we had of the council direction was that the I-35 intersections are a unique opportunity, and they are a gateway to the community, and they deserve some additional protections. And so we were asked to discuss potential zoning mechanisms with a goal to set aside some property for a mix of uses as an alternative to a large, single-use development. Not that those aren't welcome, but, you know, just trying to preserve some areas that also had some community-serving uses. So I think the particular areas of concern where we're near I-35, where development is more visible and introduces an impression of the community. So in our April discussion, I posed several questions to the commission, and our resounding response was, "No, we don't need this right now." And for some very good reasons, you said that it was poor timing to initiate a regulatory approach that may close the doors to development, particularly since most of the area is not currently within the city, and property owners may then choose to annex into a different jurisdiction. And you said that it might guarantee empty lots by being contrary to market demand, and that it may result in excessive requests for deviations or exceptions, and may result in loss of potential tax revenues until there's market support. And you said it would be difficult to determine the appropriate mix of uses to mandate or incentivize without being able to anticipate what development proposals might come forward. At least, that's what I heard you say.
I agree.
Okay. And so we have been invited to offer you a draft for a specific planned district that might achieve these goals, and also the goals of the subarea plans, and address the governing body's concerns. So we're trying to make everybody happy here. I think this is an interesting approach. I think it could be a very good approach. But the goal is to be relatively flexible in the standards, so we don't have to worry about figuring everything out ahead of time, and to encourage, but not invent, not mandate, you know, through incentives, which I understand are not your purview, but we do mention that this overlay district is tied to incentives, so that would be a policy the governing body would have to move forward with. So anyway, we're thinking that because it is incentivized to use this district, that it would be less likely to inhibit future annexation or development, because they will have options. What are their options? If they don't want to use this district, and they don't want to develop a mix of uses? So they could ask to rezone to a base zoning district like C3 heavy commercial or M1 restricted industrial. And as part of that rezoning request that comes to you and comes to the governing body, we would have two of 10 review criteria that deal with the intent statement of the comprehensive plan, which is the applicable subarea plan, future land use plan for the area, and then other city policies. And so there may be other city policies and goals that rezoning to that base zoning district would not meet. So perhaps, maybe, you'd have some ability to deny an application that way. The other way is they could ask to rezone to a general planned district, which is even more closely reviewed to city plans, and could provide some basis for denial. But general planned districts are based on the uses of the base zoning district that underlies the property, the base zoning district that would use. And then the planned designation allows you to do some deviations, so you could add other uses in a specific or limited way. You could prohibit some uses that were not appropriate. So you guys have dealt with these. You kind of know how those work. So neither of these options provides a clear link to achieving a mix of uses. And it's not necessarily a positive way to do it, you know. This other way is more of a carrot. So I just wanted to refresh your memories on the subarea plans and kind of what it does show for this area. And so the two subarea plans are outlined in red and outlined in green. And these are the future land uses that are associated with those plans. So starting at the lower left-hand corner, we would have community commercial. It's kind of a salmon color, just a tiny little strip there by I-35. That would translate to an office or a neighborhood business district. So those are, those are the kind of community-serving uses that we're trying to encourage here and there. Okay, the business office park is kind of this mauve grayish-pink color, and that translates to office or restricted industrial. And that's just to the right on the 191st Street interchange there. And I'm only talking here about the non-residential districts I'm pointing out. Regional commercial is the bright red that's around both the interchanges. That translates to general commercial, which is like C2, so it's our less intense commercial district. Or it could translate to heavy commercial or restricted industrial. Restricted industrial is the less intense industrial district. So, so a lot of the uses that would be coming in that this overlay district could pertain to might be located in those areas of red or the things that are closely adjacent to them. The commercial and light industrial is the light purple, which translates to office, heavy commercial, or restricted industrial. And then the community mixed use is that bright purple or pink, kind of in between the interchanges along I-35. Those are also community-serving uses for the most part. That would translate to an office district, or a neighborhood business district, or general commercial. And then the, we have a few areas of heavy commercial industrial, which is the dark purple. That would translate to your general industrial district.
Kelly, I'm sorry for the interruption, but if we see this map again, could we have a color code? So we know, I mean, you described all those to us, but kind of like a cheat sheet. What each of those colors mean again?
I'll include the legend next time.
Legend, there you go. Thank you.
All right, good suggestion. Okay, so digging into what we'd like you to discuss tonight, this would be the intent of the district unless you have changes that you'd like to make. We are thinking that the intent would be to create a balanced mix of regional and community-serving uses and amenities, mostly along and near key commercial corridors, using incentives. And those things that we want to have happen are the broader community benefits by integrating those uses. The infrastructure to support multimodal transportation, so that would be biking, it could be walking, it could be public transit. Improved public realm designs along those streetscapes, those very important corridors. So making sure that we don't forget about civic space design once it comes to that. And also arranging the buildings and having building design and landscape solutions that provide for transitions between these community-serving uses and these, you know, more intense uses, or even less intense homes and things around them. So we want to make sure we don't let somebody ask for deviations that mess with that compatibility. So this is just the intent here. Supporting the desired mix, multimodal transportation, public realm, and compatibility. And maybe it's good to stop right here and say, "How do you feel about this intent? Do you have any suggestions or comments about this before we go any further?"
No.
Okay. No? Okay.
No.
Okay, so then when it comes to the permitted uses, say somebody comes in with an application and they're considering using this district. We would look at that future land use map that we just looked at without the legend. And if it's within a half a mile of the I-35 interchange right-of-way, including, and it includes frontage on Arterial and Collector Streets, that's when we're thinking that they need to include at least one use in the development that's consistent with the community mixed use, future land use descriptions, or community commercial, future land uses as translated into a zoning district. Right? Because future land uses don't specifically prescribe land uses. But they're associated with zoning districts that do prescribe certain land uses or allow certain land uses. And I gave you a little table in your packet that gives those associations between the future land uses on the left and then the zoning districts. So going back to this first image, I had our John Parr, our GIS guy, show you where is that half map buffer around the interchange right-of-way boundaries. And then if you look at this map, I should have overlaid that, I guess, on the future land uses. We could do that next time, so you could see that, too. Okay, so, so we would, we would say, okay, you're gonna, you can do this logistics park use, or you can do this manufacturing use, or whatever you got going here as a primary use, but we need you as a secondary component to reserve some land for a different use, whether it's retail, or an office thing, or something that's going to serve that neighborhood. And we would want you to put that secondary component in a visibly prominent location, and let that provide some transition to more intense uses as viewed from the corridor. And then if they don't want to, you know, develop that right now, if they're not comfortable with developing it right now, they could reserve it for such future development through deed restrictions. So I'll open that up for discussion as well.
I want to keep listening.
Okay. So, in essence, they could build a warehouse, be told that they need to have some kind of community use that can be seen from the highway, but then never develop that until you still have the view of a warehouse?
Yep, you'd have the warehouse, but you would have land reserved for future development with these deed restrictions for certain types of uses. And remember, this is not, you know, they don't have to use a zoning district, but they may have to use a zoning district if they want incentives.
Okay, right. So then we would give them incentives to have an empty lot that's designated for some future other use?
Well, I was just thinking about y'all's concern that the market may not be ready for a particular use, and it may sit empty anyway. So I was trying to think, okay, well, what do I do about that?
So they could get the incentive and never develop it.
What do you think about that, Ryan? Would there be an option on getting partial incentives or something until...
Well, you know, first off, with respect to the industrial space and the flex space, what the market is dictating, because everybody is giving, meaning every municipality is giving tax abatements of, you know, anywhere from 35 cents on the dollar to 50 cents, and sometimes a little bit more. And so, and what the developers say is to be competitive on rents with these other developments, I have to, I have to have the incentive. If they want to build, I mean, if we tie the incentive to, you know, you're going to develop, you're going to rezone the property with deed restrictions, and basically be limited to developing in that manner, then they would be legally bound to do that. Now, you know, whether, whether they'd be willing to do that or not, I, you know, I can't say. But, or whether they would try to challenge that, you know, the, I think their ability to challenge that would be very dubious, because basically we're providing an incentive or denying an incentive, a tax abatement, something that we're otherwise entitled to. So if they, if they own the land, then they have a lot of incentive to do it. But I think what a lot of these that we're seeing is, particularly these developers will have an option with the property owner, and then if they don't get the incentive deal that they want, then they'll just walk away from the option.
So are other cities doing this where they're making them use LAN for another? I mean, is this standard, or are they just going to go to another city that doesn't make you use the land in a different way?
I know that the city of Leawood has a zoning district that requires a mix of uses to be developed. And usually that's for when they're wanting to encourage mixed use and residential, residential with commercial, that kind of thing. I think there are communities in Florida and other places that do this kind of thing more to create an activity center that maybe is more non-residential uses. But it's certainly understandable how you might not want something to be just all one monotonous use when those are prime spots for new neighborhoods and for transit corridors. You know, warehouses don't do, always do too much to support transit. Sometimes they do if employees use the transit, but...
So the legal analysis is the same. I mean, if someone at the I-35 and 175th Street interchange came in and said, "I want to develop it all as industrial. I don't want to do any commercial," irrespective of the incentives. I mean, we master-planned it, you know, sometimes we even, you even zone or downzone or upzone property with or without the owner's consent or with or without their application on file. And if the property owner decides to challenge that, then they have the right to do that. A lot of discretion is given to this body and to the city council in their zoning decisions as to what are appropriate uses in specific areas of the community. But, you know, you know, your eight factors, your golden factors that are listed in your ordinance, any land use that anyone came in and said, "I want to put, you know, I want to put a concrete plant and a rock crusher right at 175th and Garner Road. It's a heavy industrial use. We don't think it's appropriate, so we're going to deny it." And they can take us to court on that, and just like any other proposed land use, and we set to defend it.
That kind of leads similar to one question that I had formulating in my mind. We'll see if I can get it articulated. Does this create a scenario where we're going to, potentially, we'll incentivize this development? They want their primary use to be heavy industrial, but they want to use the incentives, so now they're trying to build the community mixed use or the community commercial directly adjacent to the heavy industrial, which we generally don't allow. But if we then deny that, are we breaking our side of the incentives?
Well, so, yeah, I...
From an economic development standpoint and a development standpoint, the answer would be no. Simply because when they accepted the overlay district, they said they would be doing that and accepting the incentive so provided. So at that point in time, it's basically an MOU, a memorandum of understanding. And the memorandum of understanding very clearly spells out, "This is what we do. This is what you do. This is what you get. This is what we expect." And based on an MOU, then they perform to that by performing those duties that they said they would do, which is to develop a warehouse, and they go out and develop commercial. If they're not a commercial developer, then they very easily could either sell that to a commercial developer, or they could join a partnership with a commercial developer to do that particular aspect of it. And they could pass that through, and then we could add whatever needed to be added in order for that to occur. But for us to say, "If you don't do it, you don't get the incentives," that's a takeback. And there are some very specific situations in which that's allowed and others in which the court said you can't do that. So I think we'd be very careful in making sure that the incentives were correctly applied to these particular projects. We're trying to walk a fine line here to keeping the flexibility that you feel as a planning commission that you've expressed to us needs to occur in those particular areas, because they are gateways to our community. And, but the same token, keep the thought processes that the city council has expressed to us, which is to... which is to...